Okay, we'll get started with our pre-meeting. And we will start off with the naming of the park on Venture Way, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. The first item on our pre-meeting tonight is with regard to the park on Venture Way. We're not suggesting a name, that's just how we're trying to designate it. This is actually the dog park that we're talking about, that council approved for construction, so to speak. You'll recall that some dollars were set aside at some point in the past in order to make that happen. And we are using those dollars in accordance with your direction. And the last thing we need to do, basically, is give it a designation or a name. And so, in the memo that you have in your packets, you'll notice that there's some suggestions that we'd gotten from the public, as well as from staff, and because we had put out some feelers with the public to see what recommendations they might have. Tonight, we just need your blessing to move forward with one of those names. And we'll have a ribbon cutting at some point, in a safe manner, of course, and see if we can't get her opened up in time for dog walking season, whenever that might be.
All right. Any discussion on this? Councilman Kathy.
The one thing I would like to mention, and I know there are a lot of people probably listening, this park is being built with private funds. There has been no city tax money used in this. A particular individual came out and donated the 140-some-odd thousand dollars to build this park. So I want everybody in the public to know that, and we thank that donor. And I like Horizon Way, or Horizon View.
All right. Any other discussion? So are you needing us to pick a name, or not?
Well, if council has a pleasure along those lines, we would take that direction and move forward.
Councilman Bates?
I agree with Councilman Kathy, the Horizon Park. Hearing what they had to say, I wanted to go out and look at it for myself, but picturing in my mind and drove out there before, I could see exactly, and I actually really liked that idea. So, that's my personal opinion.
Vice Mayor Lutz?
Me too, or me third.
All right, well, it kind of looks like Horizon, is it?
That is what we will use it, and thank you very much.
Okay. All right, then we will move on to Mike Lansing Stadium Proposals, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is an item that we're bringing back as a follow-up to a previous discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago. We did gather some more information, got some more detail from our proposers, our bidders, if you will. And put that information in your packets for you to review and look at and so forth. Indeed, we are pleased to have another meeting on this topic, if indeed council would like to do that. Certainly, we gave ourselves a little wiggle room in terms of the timeframe that this proposal could ultimately be awarded, or the approach that we take selected. We have Mr. Cortez on the phone, we have individuals in the room as well, to try to answer questions that you may have, or directions that you'd like to see happen. Each proposal has its strengths and weaknesses, as we talked about last time, and if it pleases the council, I'd like Mr. Cortez to kind of go over that, particularly since we've given this more thought since the time we met last. Staff is kind of leaning in the direction of seeing what it is that we could do as managers of this facility for a year or so, to see how it would work, see how it would run, and to ensure that each entity had equal access as much as possible. Council, however, has the, obviously, the authority and blessing to tell us which way you'd like us to go, however, based on information you've reviewed and information you may still want to collect. So, the way we go tonight is absolutely at your discretion, but nonetheless, at the very least, we want to be sure that you have access to information that you may be lacking at this point in time.
So, we want to hear more from Mr. Cortez? If he has more information, if we could hear from him, that'd be great.
That'd be great, Mr. Cortez, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, so, Carter, all the proposals have strengths and weaknesses. I pointed out a few of those when we met last time on this topic on Tuesday. Council did ask us for a couple of things to come back to do with, which is in the packet. One of those things was to see kind of a sample schedule, if you will, that would kind of illustrate the sharing of the facility amongst the different user groups. All three entities, meaning Spectra and Casper Baseball Club, the Casper Horsehead, as well as my staff, put together those schedules that are included in the packet. And at the end of the day, I would say that all three, you know, exhibit shareability, if you will, with regard to Lansing Field. The second thing that was asked by council was to maybe get out the idea of a rate sheet, if you will, as to what each entity would charge the other user groups for use of the field. Meaning, I think, with the common concern that people could say they could share the facility, but if you're going to charge them, they're orbiting a lot of money, what difference does it make at the end of the day? And so, all three entities submitted those sheets, you know, as far as what they would charge. And it seems like they're all pretty much in agreement, to say, yeah, we're not going to charge anything, or the majority of the fees that you would see would be a fact for my staff to come in and maintain the fields. The third thing that council did ask, and I apologize for not having it in this packet, was a scoring matrix, if you will, which was included in the packet last week, last Tuesday. It was a blank sheet. And we don't have anything scored, as far as from the review committee, to share with council tonight. One of the big issues I would have with that is, would it be rated, weighted, I should say? And/or, it's pretty difficult for me to have an objective, you rating our own staff, you know, as far as, should we do the overseeing of the facility ourselves? We could still go through that exercise with council, wish and the debatia, but I will say that we don't, that is one item that's not in the packet tonight. But at the end of the day, I think that part of the app, my recommendation, would be for our staff to try with existing staff, existing resources, to manage the field, just for the basic fact that we could show the utmost control, and make sure that everything's shared properly with regard to what council and to the Casper would like to see, without us opening up a question.
Any questions, Mr. Cortez? Councilman Hopkins?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It sounds to me like this is probably a good course. If nothing else, we would learn some things, and some of the ins and outs of what might be required in scheduling. So if we take it on for a year, we might choose to continue to do it, but we also would gain some experience, perhaps, how to manage it altogether if we have a contract. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lutz?
And I like that idea, because I think that that shows the commitment to the fact of, you know, if during this one-year period, and I don't see this happening on any level, but that the city wasn't able to, you know, manage the facility property, et cetera, et cetera, it's only a one-year contract, and so we're not tied into anything long-term. And, you know, after that one-year period, you know, we make the decision, basically, to put it back out for RFP, and these user groups would have the chance to, basically, resubmit the same proposal, and we could move from there.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim, we've talked a little bit about how the city staff wouldn't have nearly as much experience with booking non-baseball events as Spectra, or even Mr. Heeman, who has done non, has hosted non-baseball events. And I, of course, as Councilman Huber and others have pointed out, the primary purpose of the field is baseball. But there certainly is some potential for it to be used for other events, and possibly revenue-producing events for the city. And so, there's, I know we've had some discussions of, well, could the Horseheads, or could Spectra reserve the field, or rent the field for a nominal fee, and run events alongside of the city operation? Mr. Murphy, who is here tonight, has pointed out that there are some, that can be a cumbersome arrangement, because they're not really operating the facility independently, and they have to go in and check the inventory of the concession stands, and it's just more difficult, if you're not in charge, to kind of come in and do a one-shot deal. Do you, have you done any more thinking about what, A, should that be a priority, B, how could we make that work, and how could we sell the idea to Mr. Heeman and to Mr. Murphy and his group? And is that a legit, do you think that's a legitimate concern, that they may be less willing to use the facility for non-baseball events, if they really don't have full control of the facility? If I ask that in a way that makes sense?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Powell, I think, could I question, if you will, I got to fully admit, you know, me and my staff, that's one of those weaknesses we thought with us doing it would be some of that outside-type event, outside of baseball, that is. I will say that, to me, in my mind, it would function much like the Washington Park Band Show. We rent that out for a variety of different events, you know, by different groups. I will admit that Mr. Murphy's correct, you know, it's not quite a turnkey to do it that way, because they can't leave things on site, maybe, that they would store, you know, for those types of events. Powell, it's still totally doable. We would still open up a facility for whatever events that any group could bring us, including, obviously, the Horseheads and/or Spectra. Hopefully, I answered that.
Any other questions, or comments? So, as far as direction on this, of either, we can decide to move forward with the recommendation of the city, or further discussion at a later time on this, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, that would be correct, or if council, in the majority, has a different direction. Absolutely, any of the above.
So, looking at moving forward with the recommendation that staff has now, who's, has a flavor for doing that?
If it's for one year, yes.
If it's for one year? Okay. Looks like that's your direction, so...
Thank you.
Okay. Then we'll move on to agenda review. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, the, I don't really have anything to go over with you tonight by way of review, other than to remind you that we do have the first reading of the massage therapy ordinance, if you will, this evening. And, other than that, I think, I think we've talked about most of, all the other items.
Okay. And if I can just take a moment, at this point, for agenda review, just, I realize that this evening is, it's election night. There's a couple of you that, obviously, are, I would think, are interested in how your votes go. So, when we start this tonight, I'm not going to race through the agenda by any means, we're certainly going to spend the time that needs to be spent on each of the items, but I would like to get through it relatively at a decent time tonight, so that those that are wanting to see how the returns come out, we can get you out of here at a decent, decent hour. So, just putting that out there. Okay, so, we'll just take a break for about the next 13 minutes, before we start. Councilman Kathy?
For those listening, and for those of you around, if you see me start playing with my phone, I wound up this morning about 11 o'clock, I got some hearing aids, and they're controlled by my smartphone. So, if I think there's too much noise, or volume, or whatever, short of pulling them out, I've got to go to this to change volume.
What's the name of the app that you use? I'm just...
That's for me to know, and you to find out.
All right, we'll take a break.
More definitely.
To begin this evening, I would like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones at this time. And I now call the November 3, 2020 Regular Council Meeting to order. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action, excuse the absence of Councilman Johnson.
Second?
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, second by Councilman Bates. Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Alyssa, maybe somebody wants to lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Please join us in a pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action, the minutes of the October 20th, 2020 Regular Council Meeting, as published in the Casper Star Tribune on October 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bates, second by Vice Mayor Lutz. Any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action, the minutes of the October 27th, 2020 Special Council Meeting, as published in the Casper Star Tribune on November 1st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, second by Councilman Kathy. Any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action, the minutes of the October 27th, 2020 Executive Session. twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty executive session.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Huber, second by Councilman Bates. Any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the November third, two thousand and twenty bills and claims as audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Powell, second by Councilman Hopkins. Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Okay. Bright spots in our community, we'd like to welcome members of the Casper Youth Council to the meeting tonight. We recognize some of you from previous meetings, and tonight we'd like to hear more about your group. Alyssa Ruckel, if you would like to introduce the group and tell us more about it, we would love to hear it.
I'm Alyssa. Do you want my address?
Yeah, sure.
So seven eighteen Divine. Alyssa Ruckel, I am the advisor for the Casper Youth Council, so it is my pleasure to introduce you guys, mayor, city manager, and council, and our city attorney, to the newly elected officials of your very first Casper Youth Council.
Do I say my address? Sure. Hi, I'm Kenzie Martini. Thirteen forty-one Linda Vista Drive. I am the newly elected chair of the Casper Youth Council, and I'm a senior at Kelly Walsh High School.
I'm gonna assume that I say my address too, so. My name's Bryce Abear. I currently live at thirty-nine thirty West Forty-Fifth Street here in Casper. I'm glad to be the vice chair of the student council, or not the student council, the city council, not the city council. Okay, we're just gonna ignore that. Well, I'm a sophomore at NC currently, so.
Thank you.
Brooklyn Wisterson, twenty-six fifty Harvard Street. I am the newly elected secretary of the Casper Youth Council, and I am a freshman at Casper College.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Ruble. I live at forty-four thirty-five East Twenty-first Street. I am the treasurer of the Youth City Council, and I am a ninth grader at Kelly Walsh.
All right.
So I'm just gonna tell you guys a little bit more about us. So basically, we just act as liaisons from our peers to you guys, and we also have city officials and stuff like that sit in on our meetings and help us like learn more about what you guys do, because that's kind of like our main goal. And we're very happy to acknowledge Mayor Frill for being our first attendee, official attendee at our meeting, so thank you guys very much for the opportunity, and thank you Mayor Frill for attending our meeting.
Thank you. So we did have a meeting this last Sunday, and I have to say, I thought it was an excellent meeting. We had a lot of good conversation, talked about issues that are taking place now, and it was great getting the perspective of the four of you that were in the room, actually five that were in the room. But I look forward to, as this grows, it's very good to be able to get perspective from our youth, so you guys are doing an excellent job so far, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Bates.
Before you guys disappear on me, Mayor Frill said that you guys discussed a few issues. Do you mind touching bases on maybe one or two of those of what you guys talked about?
Yes. I was supposed to do that, but I forgot. We are implementing a mask initiative, kind of, and so we are sending a survey through Kelly Walsh and NC to kind of just get the, gauge the youth's perspectives on wearing masks and everything, and just, just to kind of take a poll on what our youth's perspective is on that issue.
Awesome.
Yes.
And that's going out to all the students?
Yeah. It'll be going out to all of the students, and then we'll poll that information and then pass it on to you guys.
Awesome. Super. Thank you.
And we talked about a few other current issues or past issues that we've had. We talked about the, when we were discussing whether keeping recycling bins or not, and we explained the process that we went through with that, and how we opened the portal so that we could get the citizens that wanted to use the portal to get this information. So it was, it was a pretty good discussion. I only planned on being there a half hour, and we spent a little bit of time, so it was good. It was very good. So keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Yes, he is. I got a whole list of questions for you guys to ask him.
Thank you guys very much again.
Thank you. Okay, now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask the following. Please state your name and address. Direct all questions, comments to the mayor and only the mayor. No personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters. These will be referred to our city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by council members. Presentations are limited to five minutes, and duplication of speakers will not be allowed, nor will time extensions be permitted. Please note that public hearings and ordinance each have their own comment period, so please hold your comments on those items until we reach them. In this box you can see up here, when it hits red, that's when the time's up, so you might be mid-sentence, but I will stop you. So I invite anybody that wants to come up to approach the lectern there and... Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Michael W. Hamel, twenty-five oh four Bonnie Bray Street. First off, Mayor Frill, I want to thank you very humbly for stepping outside of decorum and allowing me to speak yesterday. I want to ask, are you guys ready? Because this is gonna get worse. You saw maybe a hundred yesterday? Every one of those hundred is gonna share their thoughts and opinions, including what happened yesterday, with ten others, and those ten others are gonna share with ten others. As I stated yesterday, Mr. Mayor Frill, this isn't gonna go away. It's not gonna get better, and if you listen to what Dr. Dowell was saying yesterday, then you understand that perfectly. If you do nothing else, if you do nothing else, do yourself a favor and be ready for the attrition rate. Because flu season's coming, and when you compound it with COVID, the people that are already dying, the people that are already being turned away because there's no room, it's gonna multiply. It's, it's already exponential. It's gonna become tragic shortly. I don't know what else to say to you people, because outside of this room, you don't talk to us, and it is somewhat apparently apparent now that behind your closed doors, you talk about us. You might want to think about during these times becoming much more transparent, because the more you keep from people, the more they're gonna blame you. And I'm saying you, sir, because I'm only supposed to address you. I apologize. Y'all be safe, be vigilant, and be ready. Please have a nice evening. Thank you for your time, sir.
I will respond to you just briefly, okay?
Okay, sir.
Two weeks ago, I think when you talk about transparency, I think two weeks ago, I gave a statement of exactly where we're at. In two weeks' time, that there was an incredible increase in the amount of viruses gone around, and sickness, and death. And I addressed that on Saturday of this past week. The events that unfolded yesterday did not allow us to address it as we, we wanted to. So I think that you'll see in the, in the coming days that the message that was meant to get out yesterday will come out, and people will get, to get the word that we were trying to get to everybody.
I, I do understand that, Mayor Frill. I'm not, I'm not disrespecting anybody, and I'm not casting any aspersions on anybody. This is just my view from my experience, my education, and my practical application of knowledge in the U.S. military. I'm not looking at it from Dr. Dowell's perspective of infectious epidemiology. I'm looking, I'm looking at it from a direction of a, please excuse me, I'm not being apocalyptic or anything, but as a biological attack. I mean, the source is already proven, and when I made my comments yesterday, when this all began, information and knowledge was shared with politicos without being insulting higher up the ladder than the city council or the board of commissioners. It was ignored, and it was just a sharing of knowledge. It wasn't a demand for action or a statement that you better do this, or you better do that, or, it was just a sharing of knowledge. That's what I do. When something makes me curious, I have to find out. When something makes me suspicious, I have to find out. And I, and I won't stop until I know everything I believe can be known on any matter. But right now, sir, this should be the least of your concerns. And I'm serious. If, if it's a matter of, and, and I'm not fixating on money or anything, but if you want to invest in something right now, invest in body bags, mayor, because you're gonna need them. I apologize for coming out like that. Please be safe, please be vigilant, and just watch. Thank you for your time. I'm yellow. I'm going home and having dinner.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Huber.
If I might have just a moment here. Sir, I really, really tremendously respect you coming forward and saying what you think and everything here. There's one thing that you commented on that I feel the need to comment on. We do not have any secret meetings or secret agendas or anything like that, and if, if, you know, I, and I mostly want to make sure and reassure everybody in the community that, no, we don't get together secretly and discuss secret stuff or anything. The secret is that there aren't any secrets, and, you know, and that's the only thing that I wanted to just assure you of and everyone else. But I truly respect and absolutely, you know, your concerns are something that are very near and dear to, certainly near and dear to my heart, and that I worry about a great deal, and I appreciate you coming forward and talking about that. But the secret is that we don't have any secrets.
Would you allow me to make a quick suggestion? Don't have any more closed-door meetings. Let the public hear what you have to say. And I really appreciate this, because I don't have to stand here and look up at you. I like looking people face-to-face, eye-to-eye. You can learn so much more. I apologize if the word "secret" sounded conspiratorial. It wasn't meant that way. But please understand our perceptions. When you use initializers in your council meetings, you create an atmosphere of confusion amongst lawful Americans who live here, pay taxes here, live, die, watch their children's grow. I've offered and asked to speak with many of you. I've been summarily dismissed. I asked to speak to Chief McFeeters. I was summarily dismissed. I asked to speak to Sheriff Holbrook. I was summarily dismissed. The only two people, one on the city council and one on the Norah County Boards of Commissioners, were willing to talk to me, honestly, without yelling and screaming at me because I had questions I wanted answered. Apparently, they don't like it when you keep asking questions. That's how I learn. Please. Yes, sir?
My last statement, just to clarify, because I know I've talked to you.
Oh, yes, sir. I, I didn't say everybody.
Right. So making clear that never dismissed you. Never, I, I hope you never felt like, because you asked me questions that I didn't want to answer or anything, just to make sure that, is that accurate? That I've been open and honest?
Yes, you always have. Mr. Bates, and I appreciate and respect that, sir.
Thank you. I just, let me make sure I didn't offend you in any way.
Oh, no, no, no. None of you have offended me. I'm not easily provoked like that. I understand that everybody's, and I apologize, I'm in the red. I understand that everybody's busy. I understand there's a lot going on, but for crying, for crying out loud, put this stuff aside for a little while, because whatever you don't do, whatever you don't show the lawful Americans who live here, it's gonna come back and it's gonna bite you. You'll get the blame. County Commissioners will get the blame. State Senators will get the blame. The governor will get the blame. They're ignoring too many things. They're casting aside too many concerns of, let's say, the average American. And I'm not here to insult you. I'm not here to yell at you, or scream at you, or swear at you, or threaten you. I'm just telling you that from a different perspective, one that may be a bit outside your purview. There's knowledge, there's truth about what's going on. Talk to others. Listen to what they have to say. If you question it, research it. It doesn't take very long nowadays. You can find out almost anything, and I know I'm looking around, but I also know that I'm supposed to address you, mayor. I apologize for going overboard. Some of you have my phone number. All of you know my name. All of you know my num, my address. I don't hide in the shadows. I'm not that kind of person. Speak with someone who speaks with others. That's all I'm saying. And go outside your social circles. Go outside this edifice. I think maybe there's one lesson that could be taken from the Chinese as far as politics go, and that's that every year, their politicians have to go out and be amongst and work with what are considered the common man, or woman. No, no, nothing intended there, Ms. Lutz. Please, be safe, be vigilant, pay attention, because you're gonna see it when it happens very quickly. I'm gonna go home and have supper and sit with my loving life. Good evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Okay. We will, please read the consent agenda titles.
Establishing number seventeen, twenty twenty, as a public hearing date for the consideration of the following four items. Item nine A one A, a zone change of lots three and four, Hembree addition number two, from zoning classification R two, one-unit residential, to C two, general business, located east of Robertson Road and directly north of twenty-six seventy-one South Robertson Road. Item nine A one B, to vacate and replat Mesa Del Sol Edition Three, to create Mesa Del Sol Four Edition, generally located at the intersection of Jordan and Central Drive. Item nine A one C, plating a portion of Section Three, Township Thirty-three North, Range Seventy-nine West, six P.M., Norah County, Wyoming, to create the Kinko Edition Number Two, located eight thirteen North Elma Street and comprising point seven seven acres, more or less. And item nine A one D, amending ordinance number eleven hyphen eleven, and ordinance granting to, granting to Source Gas Distribution LLC a franchise agreement.
The chair would entertain a motion to by minute action establish the public hearing dates as just written.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, second by Councilman Cathy. Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Cathy. Any abstention or nay votes? Excuse me. All voting aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
The proposed ordinance, having come off the table and the public hearing date being established for tonight, by minute action at our last meeting, I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the massage therapy license and permit ordinance. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We have two exhibits. Exhibit number one, correspondence from John Henley to the Casper City Council and Jane Carter-Napier dated October twenty-one, twenty twenty. And exhibit number two, affidavit of publication, is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated October twenty-six, twenty twenty.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, after quite a bit of work with, uh, members of the massage therapy community and, uh, with respect to, uh, members of this council, um, the proposed ordinance has been drafted for your perusal and, uh, potential formal approval in first reading. Uh, the items that the ordinance covers are items that I, were identified by the councils being important as well as representatives of the respective communities being important and, uh, I think are well captured in the body of ordinance that you have to review tonight.
Okay. Counsel will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issues involving the massage therapy license and permit ordinance to please approach the lectern.
My name is Michael Seek of nine thirty-two South Spruce. I've been a practicing massage therapist for over thirty years. And for the most part, I'd like to applaud the council for addressing this issue. For most of my career in massage therapy, I couldn't have cared less about licensure because I'm happy just to do what I want to do and not be bothered about by anybody. But I do believe that because massage therapy can affect the public's health, safety, and well-being, that regulation is warranted to protect the public's health, safety, and well-being. However, there was nothing like that stated in the ordinance, and I think that should be part of the ordinance, that that's a good reason for having licensure. But I do have a couple of comments concerning it. Uh, what was the definition of massage therapy? I don't know what the main impetus for passing this ordinance is, other than according to your, uh, document, you're doing it because you can. One thing that is often addressed with massage therapy regulation is trying to separate the legitimate therapists from those who are not quite so legitimate, and I don't have a problem with that. However, I think the definition of massage not only should say what massage is, but what massage isn't. And that would be something to the effect that massage therapy does not include any overt sexual contact or any activity or action that could be objectively construed to be sexual misconduct. That pretty much solidifies a separation between legitimate therapists and those that aren't quite so legitimate. Uh, that's the second thing I wanted to comment about. And the second, the next thing is under the qualifications for licensure and the grandfather clause, one of the qualifications for membership through the front door is passage of the MBLX exam. Well, that's a relatively new exam. It hasn't been available, and I'm sure most therapists have probably never taken that exam. Uh, I know I've been doing massage for thirty years, and this is a relatively new exam. I've not taken it. I do have my education hours from my massage school, and I took a massage competency exam there, and also when I joined the AMTA, which is the American Massage Therapy Association. Uh, I took a massage therapy competency examination then, too. And that's basically all the MBLX is, is just the newest, latest, fanciest massage therapy competence examination. So I don't really think it should be named out specifically, but maybe the ordinance could allow for any current or past qualified massage therapy competency examination, uh, to cover that part of the requirements. And then under the grandfather clause, reading through the ordinance, uh, there's really no difference between coming in the front door and coming in the back door, uh, because it still requires the passage of a test, uh, five hundred hours of, uh, training and having been established practice in Casper or in Wyoming for a number of years. I think rather than all three of those, it should be one of those three. Because there are many therapists in town. I know of one in particular who's been practicing almost as long as I have, who does not have the formal training necessary, but she's got a great practice. And I think putting her out of business would be a disservice to her, to the community, and to her clients. Uh, so there should be a way that, just having been established for almost thirty years, she should be able to get a license and continue going on. Of course, new therapists coming to town for the first time, they, of course, have to come through the front door and meet the upfront requirements. But to be a real grandfather clause, I don't think you should put the same requirements to come in the back door as the back door, as the front door, especially since this grandfather period would only last for, I think it's ninety days? Is that what they agreed on, ninety days? I think ninety days. So that would give, basically, a chance to keep practicing therapists in business and ensure that future therapists would follow into the guidelines of the city. And, uh, I'm sorry, I'm kind of nervous. I haven't ever spoken to the city council before. This is all new. But a little bit of history with me is, I've been a member of the American Massage Therapy Association in Wyoming for thirty years. I've been its president, secretary, treasurer, education director, uh, and legislative liaison over these years, and I actually served on the informal committee for massage licensure. And we actually wrote the Massage Therapy Practice Act that may or may not be under consideration by the state sometime soon. Uh, so I'm familiar with this subject, and that's basically, as I've researched this and gotten into it and studied other states, I've actually become more in favor of licensure than not. But I do think, I don't think we should put anybody out of work who's got an established practice, and I can't really think of anything else to say other than that, except thanks for your time, and I do appreciate the city addressing this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the issues involving massage therapy license? Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issues involving the massage therapy license and perm- permit ordinance, please approach the lectern.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Mayor. My name is Elizabeth Scott. My ad- business address is three thirty-seven South Conwell. I live out by the Goose Egg. Need my residence number, I can get, uh, address, I can give you that. I sent each of you a letter close to a month ago, addressing this issue. I am opposed to this ordinance because, quite simply, I grew up in the country where you are responsible for yourself. You have to think, act, and do for yourself. If you have a flat tire, you fix it, or you don't get home. There is no rescue. Right now, we have the freedom to have whatever kind of a business we want, whether, what kind of massages we want, if we want, whatever type of education, certification, and who we want to work for. Basically, all this ordinance does is ask you gentlemen for permission and pay for that permission to work. This ordinance does not fix anything directly or indirectly. There are issues in the community, and there will always be issues in the community and, and in the states that are licensed. They have those issues anyway. There is always a cost to any additional government, any additional regulations. And regulations slow economic growth, which is very important to you gentlemen at this point because the city of Casper is gonna be facing budget cuts next year. And we can see historically and in this modern age what regulation does to any occupation in the industry. It can shut it down. I've been a massage therapist for twenty-eight years. I started out with a Casper college course and lessons from another therapist, and I went to work because I had two small children to raise. I didn't have time to go out of state. I didn't have the resources to go out of state, so I stayed here and I worked. I've worn out three massage tables. I've treated hundreds of people, done thousands of treatments. There's a couple problems with this ordinance. The big one is, for anyone who wants to hire a massage therapist, they have to come down, give a history of their business, do a background check, and pay a fee in order to hire a therapist. The problem with this is therapists, particularly young ones starting out, need safe places to work. First week I started working, a massage therapist was raped and murdered in Colorado Springs, right out of, by two men right out of prison. This is why I advertise my phone number is unlisted and I only take referrals. Therapists need safe places to work. They need to be able to work in chiropractic offices, P.T., O.T., doctor's offices, hair salons, uh, exercise gyms. And I can tell you right now, having employed people, if I have to go through a bunch of red tape and pay money to employ someone, I will not do it, and no other business owner will do that. That shuts off the employment for a lot of starting-out massage therapists, and we need them. The turnover in this occupation is very big. The other ordinance, of course, Michael Seek has addressed that already. The grandfather clause leaves somebody like me out completely. I either have to go out of state to get the credentials or I have to do something else. This is an a- an additional expense to the taxpayers. This is a time to be streamlining and cutting back on government. And it doesn't help community development. We need more people working. If you want to address the issues of massage parlors, prostitution, you have to d- rest those absolutely directly. By regulating us to address that issue is like changing a flat tire on the car that doesn't have the flat tire. I have run three businesses. And I don't like having someone else breathing down my neck. If I had wanted that kind of a job, I would live in a different state or I'd work for a corporation, or I'd work for a corporation with a union. I like being an independent entrepreneur, businesswoman, and I don't think it is, uh... I think it's better to stand, everybody stand on their own two feet. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm sorry I ran over. I appreciate your time. And lady, I'm sorry. You're outnumbered, my dear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, uh, wishing to speak in opposition to the issues involving the massage therapy license and permit ordinance? There being no one, or no others to speak for or against the issues involving the massage therapy license or permit ordinance, and I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance to limit the practice of massage therapy to certified massage therapist's license required.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading to the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Hoover, seconded by Councilman Bates. Discussion? Councilman Cathy?
The one thing I would like to mention is, I am sorry, and I think it has to do with the election night, that, uh, more of the committee wasn't here that worked so diligently to put this together. But, uh, in answer to the grandfather provisions, one of the things it says, and you need to read it carefully, is it says, "Any individual who has practiced massage therapy or bodywork may upon paying a fee of sixty dollars be granted a massage therapist's permit to practice in the city without being required to have five hundred hours of schooling and to take an examination if the applicant provides evidence satisfactory to the clerk as follows." So you don't have to have the five hundred hours, you don't have to have taken the MBLX, which is what is now for the new people. But it says you have to actively practice for two years, out of the last three in Casper, graduated from a school of massage, which you said you had, therapy program approved by the clerk's office, may be proven by presentation of a diploma or credentials, which, if you have a license in another state, that counts as those credentials, or passed an examination acceptable, which you had passed another examination. Now, as far as Mrs. Scott's concerned, I mentioned to you at our meetings how you can get your license quite easily. So you can wind up with a license if you so choose. That's all I have to say. But basically, this was, and the definition and everything, was approved by, well, it was a compromise on definitions and on wording, and the city attorney, and, it's okay by the city attorney, the police chief has no issues with it, and the majority of the people at the meeting and the committee, and I see, thank you for nodding yes. I appreciate it. So there is one more committee member here that, uh, is in favor of it, even though she didn't speak, so.
Okay. Councilman Hoover?
This proposed legislation is not perfect, but it is most definitely a good step in the right direction. Uh, and, uh, and so I, I think we need to go ahead and move forward with this. It's like a lot of other legislation, a lot of other things. You know, the old saying is, don't watch legislation being made. It's like watching sausage being made. You won't ever eat sausage if you watch it being made. Uh, but I think this strikes good compromises with everybody, uh, concerned, and I think it's a good workable piece of legislation, and I would urge that, uh, that we pass it.
Councilman Bates?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if I can address, uh, Councilman Cathy, because you were involved with this. Something that my, uh, Mr. Michael mentioned, um, or I guess anybody, the, he mentioned what massage is, but then adding in there what massage is not. I guess, uh, my question is, is would that be an issue to deter, you know, add what it is, which we already have, but what it is not for the fact of the sexual nature that the people have? So I'm just wondering the thought on adding something to that regard? Or did you guys discuss something of that regard?
I don't recall that that issue ever really came up. No, I, I have another, a younger brain over here saying that, no, it didn't. So, uh, yeah, that, that particular issue or phrasing, I don't believe came up.
Uh, Councilman Cathy is correct that that particular phrasing... Councilman Cathy is correct that that particular phrasing, that particular kind of a thing didn't come up directly. It did however come up indirectly, in that a great many of the folks that helped work with this kind of said, "Hey, you know, if you're wanting to deal with prostitution and those kind of things, deal with that separately. Don't, you know, don't paint us into that corner." And, you know, and that makes some sense. And so that's partially why this definition was drafted the way that it was, and why a lot of the things kind of went in the direction that they went in, instead of going in a different direction. And also, there's the problem that if you start trying to explain what something is not, then you get down a whole bunch of rabbit holes, everything, "Well, it's not this, it's not that, it's not that." And so, you know, that's kind of how that definition came up. But no, we didn't directly talk about it that way, but we did talk about it indirectly in the other ways that I've mentioned.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
The only thought that I'm having, as we talked about this, is I, especially, I mean, my day job is in the heaviest regulated industry known to man, and I would almost wonder, I know that the MBLX is pretty standard, especially for people coming out of like certified programs, but I would be interested to hear about if there are other like competency type tests that are out there that are kind of like generally available. Obviously, I'm not familiar with this industry, so I have no idea. My own, the only reason I'm saying that is, you know, maybe there is like some sort of equivalent testing or other tests that are available, and we could make that a little bit more of an inclusive grouping versus just the MBLX by itself.
There, from what I understood from all of our meetings and everything, is that there used to be
Okay.
...another exam, but in recent years, that exam has gone away, and that right now the MBLX is the only nationally certified, recognized exam.
Councilman Huber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to also mention one other thing, I think, everybody involved in this, and if there are any state legislators listening, it would really be a great idea if the state would step in and adopt something about this. But, you know, we're, we want to be out in front and the lead in this, and we can't make the state do things, but I would very heartily urge the state to get on, to get going on this and to enact some kind of legislation.
Councilman Powell.
I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to express my appreciation to Councilman Cathy and Councilman Huber for taking the leadership on this and devoting a fair amount of time to putting this together, as well as all the volunteer members that stepped up to try to help us understand their profession and take their profession seriously, which is what this is all about.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have shared since the beginning some concerns about the grandfather clause, because I concur that it's basically a front door and a back door, the way it's written. And I may want to offer a slight modification to what we have in Section D-2, because I think in almost, I can't think of any profession, any profession, that didn't start out with a group of people, and then they decided to get their heads together and have a sponsoring organization, whether you're an engineer or a doctor. Doctors typically started out being barbers or something, but now it's gone far beyond that. And I'm not saying that you shouldn't have something like that, but I think we need to have something that considers equivalent experience. I know Councilman Cathy had discussed what it takes to become a professional engineer, but that doesn't mean you have to be a professional quote engineer to do certain jobs. There are jobs that are involved in the public that require that typically. But it's the same kind of thing, people that are accounting trained, just because you do that does not mean everybody that's a darn good accountant has to be a CPA. And I think when we start saying, "Pass the test," it's the test, none of us have seen that test, or at least, I don't, maybe you guys have seen it, that worked with them. And another thing that kind of concerns me is that we're putting this on the shoulders of the city clerk. In many other situations, we have the ability for people to appeal to this council. And so I'm not sure the city clerk really knows what she's taking on. So just food for thought. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, any amendments?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
When we look at Section D-2, after the word clerk, there's a semicolon, and I would like to insert in there, I propose an amendment, "Or provide documentation of applicable experience." And, then it goes on to the next sentence.
So in D-2, "A certification of applicable experience" is what you're wanting to add in there?
Or provide documentation of applicable experience.
Okay, so I have an amendment on the floor, is there a second to that?
All second.
Second by Councilman Bates, discussion on that. Councilman Cathy.
What, Mr., what Councilman Hopkins is proposing is the reason that, "Or credentials" is put into that statement. If you can bring in credentials that show proper experience, then that is what that means. And that is what I pointed out to Ms. Scott, is that if she could bring in credentials, letters of recommendation from other massage therapists, similar to what Mr. Hopkins is proposing, that would be a way of doing it. And that is also what I mentioned as far as the engineering texts that wound up becoming licensed engineers, is they brought in credentials from licensed engineers that said, "Yes, this man does meet," or woman, "This person does meet the credentials to be an engineer and has proven that through X years of experience." But that is the reason "or credentials" was in there. Just to clarify why wording was in there.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
So I agree. I think that this is more of just, we have to, the wording has to be different, because I think when we use the word credentials, it almost kind of has that appearance as if it were like a professional credential, as far as like accountants are a good example. When you say credentials, the first thing my accounting brain says is CPA. So I think if we're insinuating by credentials that we could have letters of experience, which I think is a great compromise that fixes a lot of these concerns that we're, I think that we just have to, somewhere in this document, whether it's through the definitions or whether it's through adding it in this section, we have to be clear what we mean by credentials. Is it letters of experience? And if it's letters of experience, what are the acceptable boundaries? Because I think we can't just be vague and say, you know, acceptable or, I don't remember the other word we were just using. It's got to be clear. And so I think that that's the problem that we're hitting on not being on the same page.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, I think we need to be a little bit, take a little bit different understanding. When we talk about credentialing somebody that you have an engineer in training, or a young guy you just hired, and he's very good, and he wants to be a good engineer, he has a bunch of cohorts that can write letters for him. When you're talking about a personal service that somebody only gets, they may be a little hesitant to write a letter and say, "This person is really good at giving massages, and they do a wonderful job." So you're asking other people that have gone to school, if you will, to get credentials from them to say they're good people. And I think there's a slight difference there in how you go about this. One of them is a cohort, and one of them is the person getting the job done. So I think there's, it goes to the same issue, I think, that Councilman Lutz was talking about, so.
Councilman Pacheco.
I've been to remain bullish on this one and stick with credentials, because I know you guys went through a long, arduous conversations, and what you guys thought would be the best opportunity as a cohort, and the way you worked in that. So I'm going to stick hard on that, and I'm hoping the rest of the council will understand, I think, why the work that they did and why those words that they chose it. And so I'm yielding to that, this committee, and to both the council members that worked real hard on it. So I think we should listen to them.
Any other discussion on this, on the amendment? Okay. So with no other discussion on that, on the amendment, all in favor of it, say aye?
Aye.
Or I guess raise your hand would be easier. All opposed? Okay. Please record the vote.
I'm sorry, I believe it was only Councilman Hopkins that voted aye? Is that correct?
One of them.
Correct, one aye.
Okay. Motion to amend failed.
Okay. So back to, are there any other amendments on the original?
Sorry, not an amendment. I was just looking at Cathy, and maybe between the next reading, I can work with you two as far as defining out those credentials, just so we're more clear, but I do not currently at this time have an amendment.
Okay. Any other amendments? Okay, so on the massage therapy first reading, any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number 32. Mr. City Man, or City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mayor. We have five exhibits. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Flir Trummel to J. Carter Napier dated October 2020. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication is published on the Casper Star Tribune dated October 26, 2020. Exhibit number three, affidavit of website publication is published on the city of Casper website dated October 22, 2020. Exhibit number four, affidavit of notice of conspicuous posting pursuant to Wyoming statute 12 hyphen 4 hyphen 104A is posted at 314 West Midwest dated October 23, 2020. And exhibit number five, liquor license application filed October 13, 2020.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to the requirements of associated statutes, when the ownership of an establishment that bears a liquor license changes, it's appropriate to transfer that same liquor license to the new ownership. In this case, the ownership of the gaslight social has indeed changed in its makeup, and accordingly, a transfer of the associated liquor license needs to be considered on a formal basis, the likes of which you are taking up this evening.
Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number 32, to please approach the lectern. Mr. Braden.
Good evening, Council. Richie Bratton, 1200 South Mitchell, one of the former and new owners of the Roaring 22 gaslight license. As Mr. Napier stated, we have had a change in ownership, we have not added any owners, we have consolidated owners, and two of the owners that were a part of the previous group are now, represent 100% of the ownership group, so I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Does anybody have any questions from council? Councilman Powell.
Mayor, Richie, as long as you're here, how did things go Saturday night?
Honestly, you know, I think I'm only going to speak on behalf of myself. As a business owner, the timing of it was probably what was frustrating for, but we certainly understand that we are a small piece of a very much bigger pie, and while we may complain at the moment, it's because we have business things that are at stake, and honestly, we don't envy your guys' position whatsoever. So we kind of get to complain a little bit, represent our constituency, I'm not afraid to say that as well. But honestly, you know, I think everybody had a really good time, from my understanding. We were very safe and everything, you know, was done in accordance with the way it was supposed to be. I was not there, that is not my scene anymore, certainly. My risk evaluation told me that that's not a place that I wanted to be that night, but I'm happy that other people were, because I think they had a good time, and I hope that, you know, again, you guys are doing a phenomenal job in a period of complete chaos, for lack of a better term, and I think the fact that you guys are making these decisions shows leadership regardless of what the outcome is. And so I think that that's what we need, is, you know, not everybody's going to be in favor of the decisions that you guys make, but that's how life works, as far as I'm concerned. And so I actually appreciate that question, because, well, you know, again, it's our job to do whatever we can, we certainly understand that we have a very biased opinion about how we look at things, and I just encourage you guys to do as you did, and reach out to the community going forward when you are making these decisions, and to the extent you can, let us know as soon as you can. I know that's not always possible, but we appreciate any kind of heads up that we can get. I think this situation, again, Halloween timing of everything, we see what's going on too, so please understand that we're in full support of getting this thing past us, and step, taking steps to do that, you know, while they may be difficult, we're prepared to do what's best for the community as well.
And thank you guys for rolling with it. Timing was unfortunate, of course, this is a rapidly evolving situation, and you all understood that, but please pass that along, that we understand, we appreciate people rolling with it.
One last comment, if I may. I appreciate all of the work the council has done, not only this year, but in past years, I've had the opportunity to work with a number of you, especially some of you that are making your last appearances, I think, tonight, and I just want to...
For nearly a decade, they said.
You know, I don't, that means that I've been here for nearly a decade, and that times me, ages me a little bit, but I certainly appreciate, I don't think it's always thankless, but many times it is thankless, and a lot of times, the people you guys get to hear from don't represent what's going on actually in the community, and I think that, as much as you guys know that, it still sometimes hurts to have people say mean things. But understand that often, a loud minority is more represented down here than what people are actually thinking out in the community, because a lot of us are really happy about the work you guys are doing, and understand that it's difficult, and it's not easy to get a board to move in the same directions, especially when you have continuing factors that change. And so certainly, Councilman Hopkins, Councilman Powell, I've worked with you guys for a long time, and I appreciate everything that you've done, all the efforts that you've made. We've succeeded together, we've failed together, but certainly, we won't give up on anything, because Casper is better today than it was before you guys were on this council, and I appreciate that. So thank you for allowing me time to speak.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thanks, sir. Is there any other individuals who wish to speak in favor of the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number 32? At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number 32, to please approach the lectern. There being no others to speak for against the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number 32, I now declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number 32.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Vice Mayor Lutz. Any discussion? Any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 18 hyphen 17, a franchise granting an electric utility easement to Pacific Core and Oregon Corporation, doing business as Rocky Mountain Power.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading to the ordinance just read.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Cathy, seconded by Councilman Bates. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. There being no one to speak, any discussion? Any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending section 13.32.020 of chapter 13.32 of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to Division III wastewater sewer discharge regulations.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading to the ordinance just read.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Kathy, second by Councilman Bates. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers. There being nobody to speak, uh, any discussion? Any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the consent resolution by title only.
Item thirteen A-one, a real estate purchase agreement with Graham Brown for real property and item thirteen A-two, a bailer bag procurement agreement with accent packaging.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt consent resolution just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Bates, second by Councilman Powell. Mr. City Manager, would you like to make any comments on these items?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item fourteen A-one, the purchase of an asphalt repair patch machine from CMI TCO and item fourteen A-two, the submission of a state historic preservation grant.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, second by Councilman Kathy. Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Okay, at this time, we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. Councilman Kathy?
Well, the one thing I would like to pass on to the public, and it was on the consent item, is that we, and normally I'm against the city purchasing property, but we just purchased property and the main reason for that property purchase was to be able to go ahead and if, at a later date, Twelfth Street were to be extended to the east, this would allow that right away to go through rather than a house being built there, which I don't know how many of you remember, but about five, seven years ago, a house at the end of what is now Blackmore had to be moved and that lot purchased to cut Blackmore through from Outer Drive all the way around to East Second Street, and so this was a preemptive move for future street development and growth eastward. I just wanted the public to understand why we purchased that. Beyond that, um, I hope, uh, I hope that our country can survive whatever comes of the election tonight and that, um, I was very disappointed in some of the constituents of our county at our meeting yesterday that did not allow for the dissemination of information and I am sad to see that our citizenry, not only here but throughout the country, seems to believe that shouting down a different opinion is the way of getting their way, which is nothing more than bullying and we need to learn to have respect for other people's opinions. We may not agree with them. I have had differing opinions with varying members of this council, but we can still sit down and discuss things peacefully and agree to disagree and that needs to become more prevalent because for our freedoms, that is what it is going to take and there are a lot of people that have paid the ultimate price to defend our freedoms and we will be celebrating those people on the eleventh, next Wednesday. Thank you.
Councilman Hopkins?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Piggybacking on what Councilman Kathy just said, which was eloquent, um, we did receive emails and there does seem to be a perception that the city council could pass a mask mandate and Mr. Henley, that is incorrect, is it not? That is the, under the purview of the health officers and the health department only.
That is correct.
And they would have to request an exception to the state health officer, Dr. Harris, and have that approved before it could be implemented, is that correct?
Typically, the, uh, the county's health department's, uh, authority is derived from the state health officer, you're correct.
Okay, thank you. Just, I thought, thought the public should be aware of that. Um, it, it was a, a sorry spectacle yesterday. Councilman Pacheco and Mayor Friel and I were there, um, and, uh, and as Doctor, as Councilman Kathy mentioned, our health officers, Dr. Dowell and Dr. Gotem attempted to describe conditions at the hospital to counter some of these arguments that these are just a bunch of old people that are going to die anyway, or they're really sick with other things and it's being called COVID, when in fact, we've had people of all different ages and there, there is a, an exponential growth in, um, the seriousness of this, um, disease. Our, our CEO at the medical center, uh, was essentially accused of corruption, being, he, that, that he was, that they were labeling, uh, they were diagnosing people with COVID just so they could get more money. It was a pretty shameful exercise. We, uh, Mike Jennings, the superintendent was there, he never got a chance to speak, to tell us what was going on in the school district and how they were protecting kids and where they saw, uh, danger signs and, and concerns that they might have and the plans that they have in place, we will never know what he would have said there because the meeting had to be aborted. And, uh, uh, my message is Casper's better than this, we've got to do better than this and we can't allow, uh, what I consider to be a sliver of our population to control a very important dialogue as far as how we respond to this, this, this growing challenge. And, um, I, I, I said to the mayor, I think back in April, I think, I think we're eventually going to get to a mask mandate. Uh, no one takes any pleasure in that and it's not our call, but, uh, we are, we're going in that direction, folks, and I think we just need to acknowledge that and we're going to have some compliance problems, obviously, with, uh, with some folks who believe they'll get sick if they wear a mask or doesn't work or whatever their arguments are, but, uh, the way our health officers, uh, were treated yesterday was, was truly shameful and I can only imagine what it'd be like to be in the hospital, working with these patients and watching them die under your care when you're doing everything you can to try to save them, um, when you're going, getting in and out of this protective gear over and over again, none of us know how difficult that is, um, and then be treated this way, uh, is truly shameful and, uh, I would like to propose that we consider a resolution of support for our healthcare professionals and that we, as a group, may very clearly state that we trust them, we believe them, we know they are working in the best interests of our community and we appreciate everything they're doing to keep us safe and that we are behind them a hundred percent and as representatives of this entire community, which is what we are, we're stating that, that, that what they heard yesterday is not what Casper thinks of their work and that we, uh, believe in their mission and we greatly appreciate what they do because it has to be discouraging to work under those conditions and then be treated in that manner and for all the other people who weren't there and health professionals to see that their representatives were treated in that, in that manner was, uh, completely unacceptable and, and I'll just share some of the, uh, and then I'll close, but some of the emails that we received described the behavior as disrespectful, appalling, arrogant, selfish, childish, exhibited willful ignorance and was anti-American. I have a hard time arguing with any of those. Those aren't my words, those are the words of people who sent us emails and, um, again, we just can't have that kind of behavior in public meetings and, uh, uh, we just have to treat our people better, so I, that's my suggestion is that we adopt a resolution of support for our healthcare professionals and if we could, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see if the rest of the council agrees.
Is everybody in agreeance with that? Okay. You have anything else you would like to add?
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Bates?
Thank you, Mayor. I do support our, uh, medical people, I mean, um, when we opened up one of the schools, uh, for the COVID and, uh, asked for volunteer nurses to go there, I offered some of my pay from council to support that, so, um, but I don't support the resolution. I think we can support them, we can say we support them and back them by saying it, but I don't believe that we need a resolution to say that, um, me personally, that's how I feel, um, and I think we're asking for major controversy regarding it, um, especially after that, I think it's too soon to ask for that, but that's just how I feel, but I, I a hundred percent support them and I disagree with, um, watching it on YouTube and not allowing somebody to speak, um, anybody to speak. I mean, they offered to allow the peo, public to address them afterwards and I think that was reasonable and respectful and so, um, I do believe respect to one another is very important, um, in all conversation, including the public being heard as well, um, so it goes both ways. With that, I do want to thank everyone that has emailed us, that are in favor of the masks, that are opposed to masks, um, other emails regarding another situation, uh, with the dogs, um, I just, I do appreciate all the emails that we get, I try to respond to every single one of them, um, one way or another, um, and so I, I, I appreciate it and the last thing is, is I want to thank everybody that has gone out and voted. I know the polls just closed for us here at seven o'clock, um, and, um, I, I really appreciate the freedom for us to vote for who we think needs to be in office and so, um, thank you to all of you guys that voted, thank you to everybody out there that voted, um, I really appreciate it. That's all I have.
Councilman Hoover?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In nineteen fifty-two, I was born at the, uh, Natrona County Memorial Hospital. I've lived here ever since then. There have only been two times in my life that I have been honestly and truly ashamed of my community. One of those was yesterday. My dad had a way of condensing things down to, uh, uh, you know, pretty understandable thoughts and he would say, you know, sometimes that people say, you know, "Don't bother me with the facts, my mind is made up" and that is what I saw on full display yesterday. Not only that, but also just rude disrespectful behavior by people that, you know, "Don't bother me with the facts, my mind is made up and I'm going to yell and scream here" and, and everything. I understand that people are very frustrated. There is nobody in the world that's more tired of the coronavirus than I am. There is, you know, I'm just as weary of all this as anyone, but being mad, carrying on and everything, that's not going to make it go away. What is going to make it go away is if we learn the facts and if we make decisions based on those facts and that is what was attempted to be presented to the community yesterday. A nice man who spoke to us earlier here today, the message that I got from him was that he, that people just want to be told the truth. You know, Winston Churchill saved, arguably, I think, saved the world from tyranny by just simply telling the people of Great Britain the truth. President Kennedy told the America and the world the truth during the Cuban Missile Crisis. That's what we need to do, that's what, uh, Mr. Mayor, you and the county commission were trying to do yesterday and it was just shamefully disappointing that there were some people that just, you know, as my dad would have said, "Don't bother me with the facts, my mind is made up" and I think that's just, you know, that, like I say, in my lifetime, there have been two times that I have been ashamed of my community, one of them was yesterday.
Councilman Pacheco?
Thank you, Mayor. I was at that meeting last year day and, and I tend to be okay reading, uh, going off the cuff, but I tend to want to be able to get a few things right before that, so I do have a, a statement that I wanted to say, a very short one. Uh, years ago, when I was a teacher, I would love to give my students current events to discuss in class, especially ones that were controversial and sometimes divisive. I wanted to create a safe place for them to learn, um, how to debate. I had very specific guidelines. First and foremost, you always, always respected the other person, no matter how much you disagreed with them, you always saw them as a person with dignity and humanity. Second, you never interrupted them. You never interrupted someone while they were trying to make their point. If you did, I was clear that it was rude, it was impolite and disrespectful to the other person. Everyone had a chance to speak, but you waited your turn, but most importantly, you listened. Why? I would tell my students in listening to others' beliefs, thoughts and opinions, you learn things. Perhaps you won't change your mind or change their, that other person's mind, but you learn who they are and sometimes you even learn who you are a little bit. Perhaps you won't change other people, um, but you listen and you understand where they're coming from. My last guideline was to be, was very simple. At the end, we all remained friends, even though we disagreed and even though we got heated and we fought like crazy, we had to embrace our differences and still be okay with those differences. It was okay for us not to accept our friends' opinions or beliefs or, on a particular issue, but we always respected them, um, no matter what. Yesterday was a tough one. I had the opportunity to be a part of that special commission meeting held in the, uh, held to update the community about COVID and how serious it has gotten. Unfortunately, which has been said before me tonight, the doctors from the health department, the officials, school district officials, county officials, college officials, were unable to fulfill that yesterday. As they were shouted down, yelled at and jeered, so ultimately the meeting was called. It was too unproductive and nothing was being accomplished. And while I understand we are in unprecedented times and I have come to expect anything and everything, I was greatly saddened by the behavior that I witnessed at this meeting. We are better than this, our community should expect better. I am asking our community to unite in the common effort of respect and civility. We have young people here from our council, from our youth council, and we should be speaking to them. We need to be able to see the worth and the dignity of every individual and to understand that we may not, we may be having differing opinions, but we can still be good and kind to one another. There was a time when we reached across the political aisle and worked together in order to make a difference. Today is our moment and we must cross the bridge and meet our friends in the middle once again to face the challenge of COVID. We are not going to agree on everything and at times it will be hard, but we have to see the humanity in other people. We have to do that. We have to rise to meet this challenge, not one by one, but together. For if my middle school students could fiercely debate one another and still remain friends, then why can't we adults? Thank you.
Place Mayor Lutz.
I feel like by the time we get to me, everything that's been said is, needs to be said, has been said, so I'll make it quick. Um, I will say, I think if we're willing to say that we support healthcare officials, but we're not willing to pass a resolution saying that we support healthcare officials, then at the end of the day, you don't support health, healthcare officials and I think that that's just something that we have to look at because they deserve our support more than anyone at this point in time. The other note that I had written down, I know, I've seen a lot of people saying that the individuals yesterday had childish behavior and it actually makes me laugh that that's the word that we use for them because I assure you that my five-year-old has a better manner set than the individuals displayed yesterday, so as much as I like, like using the word childish, I think that that was a little too much credit for the behavior that went on yesterday. The only other thing that I wanted to touch on was, anyone who knows me knows that I kind of have like a hot spot and a personal pet peeve for general respect and one of the things that my parents drilled into my brain so deep that it is there permanently is that respect is not earned, respect is inherent and I think that people kind of get this idea in their head that because I disagree with them, they haven't earned my respect. Nope, we're, every other individual deserves your respect inherently and I think that that just needs to be kind of reminded to all of us as we go through these discussions and these disagreements, we have to get back to a point where we can mutually respect each other and have... each other and have civil decency when we're talking about these manners. I'm not saying we all have to get to the same point, we have to agree, but we're all people who have families that we love and we're hard workers and we're part of this country. And we have to take a deep breath and step back and realize that the only way we move past any of this is together. And so we have to get to a point where we can do that as, as a community and as a group.
Well, the only few things I have to say. The polls are closed, so there's no need for any more campaigning, and good luck to those tonight. What's the best for you? Um, I'm not even gonna acknowledge yesterday. That was a complete waste of time, and, uh, nothing was able to be said, so there's no need to even talk about it. Um, but what I do know is there's plenty of people that have reached out to us today and want the information. And there's important information that needs to get out there, needs to get out from the doctors. Uh, we need to understand the state that this community is in right now, the spread of this virus, the amount of people that we have that are dying. Um, we haven't even, you know, I keep hearing everybody referring to the flu and, and influenza and how many people that kills a year. Only problem is, we haven't even got to that point yet. And we're already taxed with COVID in our healthcare systems and with our, um, our healthcare workers. If we can't even get through COVID, then how do we even think that we're gonna get through a season of flu on top of this? And I'll go back to what I said before. Heart attacks still happen, strokes still happen, car accidents still happen. Um, I think what Gauzy was trying to tell everybody yesterday, and the only thing that came out crystal clear out of that is, these doctors have tried to reach out to surrounding communities to send patients to because we can't take care of them all here, and all the communities surrounding us are in the same situation. They can't take them. It's a serious, serious time that we're in, and, you know, when we talk about, you know, the biggest issue that's come up is masking. That, I'm not gonna sit up here and tell you that I wanna man-, mandate masking. I'm gonna sit up here and I'm gonna plead and beg, as I have, that people need, if you're sick, you need to stay home. Social distance. Wash your hands. And when you need to wear a mask, wear a mask. I'm pleading. I'm begging. I'm asking. I'm not telling anybody. That's what it needs to come down to, and if that's what it's gotta be, I'll do that every day. We are in a bad situation here and people need to hear it. You need to hear it from the doctors. Um, you need to hear it from the school district because I'll tell you, that's one thing that everybody wanted to hear and see how bad things were. If there's one, one place in one bright shining star that I can say it's our, our own kids. Our kids inside of the schools themselves go to school, they're asked to wear a mask, they're asked to do certain things, and they do it. They don't buck the system. They go and they do it. And honestly, you know, I hate to use the analogy, but our kids are being more adults than some of our adults are being. So, I just, I beg people, do the right thing. Not telling you what to do. I'm asking you to do the right thing. That's about all I've gotta say tonight. Uh, next meetings of the city council will be a work session to be held at four-thirty PM. Tuesday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty, in the council chambers, and a regular meeting, a council meeting to be held at six PM Tuesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, in the council chambers. And I guess this might be a good time to bring it up. The, our second work session, we have taken that off the books, so that's been canceled. Um, we did have an executive session scheduled for this evening, but the, because of the fact that it's election night and we know that that item can be taken care of another time, we will not have an executive session. That'll be canceled for tonight. So, I will, uh, can I get a, someone to, Councilman Bates, hold on. Councilman Bates?
So everybody's interested in what the doctors in the school had to say. So, are we not allowed to invite them during a, like, next week's work session to come before us and give them that time to inform the city of what needs to be informed? Or, or is that something that we're not allowed to do for a work session? Or can we fit that in or do that?
Of course we can. Uh, that offer was extended to all of them, of which they showed up for the county commissioners yesterday. Unfortunately, that didn't happen because of the events that took place. Um, we could certainly put our, reach out to them, but I think you're gonna find that before we can even get to next Tuesday, the doctors do have a format that they will be able to utilize to get that information out to the people. We're not just gonna sit back and not put the information out. It's gonna be put out, and they don't, we don't need to have them come in front of us to do it. It'll, it'll definitely be done.
Just thought I'd offer, since we have it, so...
Absolutely. They wanna follow up, they're, they're more than welcome to come in here any day of the week. I don't care. Any meeting, I will have them in here. Absolutely. So, can I get a, uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Kathy, second by Vice Mayor Lutz. All voting aye?
Aye.
Any voting nay? Please record the vote.
All members voting aye. Motion passed.
This meeting is adjourned.